The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Welcome to our regular council meeting, Waverham City Council, held here in the chambers, 5:00 PM, Monday, August 16th. This is the first one we've had, the only one of August, just like we did in July. It's simply a summer hours. We will be back to regular hours coming September. The first order of business is the approval of minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting, held July 19th. Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Do you have a second?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor. It has to be noted that Councilman Mickel is also absent here tonight, so we, but we do have a quorum. Any additions from the, to the agenda from the management?
Yes, your worship, there's one addition tonight. It's under 7E. It'll be called Police Building HVAC Controls, RFP.
7E?
7E, yep.
Any other additions, council? Hearing none, call the question, approval of it, all in favor? Okay. Pardon me? Do you have, oh, do you, first, make a motion then?
Your worship, I'll make a motion to accept the additions to the agenda.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor? My mistake, I didn't think we had to add a motion on that one, so, okay. Public hearings and notices, there is none, delegations, or proclamations, petitions, there is none at this point in time. Standing committees, Police Commission, the Reader's Digest version, Mr. Van Benshuyt?
Thank you, your worship. A regular meeting of the Waverham Police Commission was held in the administrative boardroom, 4:00 PM, Tuesday, July 20th, '21. Under correspondence, there was none. Reports, Chief Blunden provided, the mayor's report, Waverham Police Service statistical extract report, monthly statistical report, staff overtime, monthly comparisons, July charges, and medical, mental health assistant calls. Chief comfortable that crime trends are not rising at an alarming rate. There is a jump in sex crimes and a slight increase in crimes against persons. Medical assist and mental health calls are low. The chief provided the accounts payable report for June 2021, and he also provided the year-to-date budget report for June 30th, 2021. The chief then provided the bylaw report for June. These reports were moved and seconded and accepted by the board. Police Board Governance, City Clerk Richter provided a copy of the new Police Board Governance Policy booklet, as approved by the board, to each of the board members. Discussion around police governance, training, and Regina this fall. The chief and deputy chief are planning to attend, while Counselor Richards will invite the city manager to attend with him. All other members of the board have previously gone to this training. There was nothing under new business. The board moved into in-camera. Chief Blunden provided his verbal report for June 2021, and his human resources report for 2021. The board received the information on the long-term facility plan, and the chief also provided a quote for new Glock pistols for the force. The board moved out of camera, and the meeting was adjourned.
That will be marked as received, and can be reviewed in full on the Waverham website. The next one is the consent agenda. We have the casualty activity report, the water treatment plant report, public works report, fire department report for July, building department report. All these are in, will be seen on the City of Waverham website. Do you have a motion to receive?
Your worship, I would move that the items on the- Thank you. Your worship, I would move that the items on the consent agenda be accepted as received.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions? Call the question, all in favor? Unanimous, pass. Motions, accounts payable, do you have a motion, please?
Sorry, your worship, I'd make a motion that the purchase in the amount of $1,748.40 from July 16th to August 12th, 2021 be approved.
I'll second that, your worship.
Questions, discussion? Seeing no, none, call the question, all in favor? Passed unanimously. Next, Waverham Leisure Center UV Disinfection, RFP. Mr. Crowe?
Thank you, your worship. So, it's approved through the city budgeting process at the start of the year. $40,000 was allocated towards the installation of a new UV disinfectant system, which will assist with the treatment of the water at the Waverham Leisure Center, so for both the indoor and the outdoor systems. The added UV component will act as a supplementary system, allowing for a more efficient and complete water disinfectant process. The UV disinfection system will allow the pool system to utilize less chemical. It'll assist in maintaining effective disinfectant levels and ensure that we stay on top of our air quality in the indoor pool. So, our request for proposal was released to the industry on both SAS Tenders website and the City of Waverham website, and that RFP closed on August 9th at 4:00 PM. So, through this process, we only received one proposal, and the pricing are as below. So, we received a proposal from Paradise Pools Incorporated for a base price of $46,786.14. The install will roughly take about two days, and the expected completion date will be dependent mostly on manufacturer supply. So, as we've seen with the Spark Center and other projects we have ongoing right now, there's a bit of a break in the supply chain due to the different impacts of COVID-19. Although only one proposal was received, the Leisure Services Department is confident with the services provided by Paradise Pools. We believe the bid price to be within the expected cost range, and as the aquatics industry is fairly unique, we're not that surprised that we only received one bid. We do use Paradise Pools for quite a few of our projects around the swimming pool. So, my recommendation based off of a full bid assessment would be to recommend that Paradise Pools Commercial Incorporated of Regina, Saskatchewan, be awarded for the supply and the installation of the UV disinfection system at the Waverham Leisure Center in the amount of $46,786.14 plus applicable taxes.
Do you have a motion to accept?
Your worship, I'll make that motion, that the bid of Paradise Pools of Regina, Saskatchewan, for the supply and installation of the UV disinfection system at the Waverham Leisure Center in the amount of $46,786.14 plus applicable taxes be accepted.
Second?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Given that there's only the one response to this, which doesn't surprise me, given it, these circumstances, are you comfortable that, A, the price is in line, and B, they're able to do exactly what you're looking for?
Yeah, we budgeted about $40,000 for the project, so we were expecting it to be in that neighborhood, and, you know, you give or take 10% or so on that, I guess, and it's in the ballpark of what we were expecting. And like I said, it's a fairly unique industry, so the fact we only received one bid wasn't that unexpected.
That's great, thank you.
Seeing no further questions, call the question, all in favor? Approved unanimously. The traffic light replacement, RFP. Jen?
Yes, good evening. So, this is for the traffic signal fixture replacement at Suris Avenue and Second Street. So, the traffic signal infrastructure and corresponding underground power supply at Suris Avenue and Second Street intersection requires replacement due to its current poor and outdated condition. The new fixtures to be installed on Suris Avenue and Second Street will be upgraded to black decorative poles and bases and LED signal lights to match the infrastructure on Suris Avenue and Third Street. The budget for this traffic light replacement project is $120,000. The City of Waverham requires a contractor for the installation portion of the project. This includes installation of the new traffic signal infrastructure, which includes the traffic controller, replacement of the corresponding underground power supply, and engineered foundations at the intersection of Suris Avenue and Second Street. On July 26th, a request for proposal was posted on SAS Tenders and the city website. Quotations were to be received by the City of Waverham on August 10th at 12:00 PM. Total of two proposals were received, one from Can Traffic Services for $328,406, and Industrial Electric and Instrumentation for $42,747.31. The proposals submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, similar project experience, the required qualifications, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met. Both of the proposals met the full requirements. Industrial Electric submitted the lowest bid. With their response, they provided six similar project examples, with five of those projects being completed on the City of Waverham infrastructure. Industrial Electric and Instrumentation has been providing electrical maintenance on City of Waverham projects for over 45 years, resulting in extensive experience with City of Waverham traffic control systems. They highlighted their support of local businesses by including all local subcontractors for the underground boring and new foundations. It is the recommendation that the 2021 traffic signal fixture replacement on Suris Avenue and Second Street be awarded to Industrial Electric and Instrumentation Limited, as per the costs detailed in their bid and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd make a motion that the bid of Industrial Electric and Instrumentation Limited for the installation of a traffic signal fixture replacement at Suris Avenue and Second Street Northeast in the amount of $42,747.31 be accepted.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Go ahead. Laura?
Thank you, your worship. Jen, thank you so much for your report. There is a very large difference between the two bids, like $280,000 if my math is correct, and I think it's great that we're going with the local people. Can you tell me why such a huge difference?
It comes down to one company would have mobilization costs being there from out of town. It also is, I mean, I can't comment on their administration costs and how they run their business, but essentially, I would probably have the better understanding of the project because they've done similar projects like this for us as well. And companies, you know, if they are going to come all this way for a single project like that, tend to cost a lot more money than, say, a local who wouldn't have the mobilization to come here. Thank you.
Mr. Richard?
Thanks, your worship. Jen, great report, I agree with Councilor Morissette, thanks for that, happy to see it happen. I've kind of got one question with three probably answers you're going to give me. First off, this is only the installation, this doesn't include the equipment, all of that stuff.
Right.
So, my question to you is, because we hear oftentimes about delays in equipment and shipping right now, so, do you have a timeframe when you think this is going to happen?
So, some of the pieces are a longer lead time, the poles in particular, I think they were up to about six weeks, so we've been in contact with them for a while, and then as well as the control box was the same timeframe, so our expectation is we're trying to get this done by the end of October. But as we know with COVID, that even expected ship times are not what we can predict right now, so.
Right. That's what, that's what I thought you were going to say, I just wanted to be sure, so thank you.
Yep.
There was one question, three in one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Wasn't sure if you had more, so, okay. Any other questions? No? Call the question, all in favor? Passed unanimously. Audited financial statements and public accounts, if you would, Laura?
Good evening. So, we have received the 2020 audit financial statements from Grand Thornton. This year again, Grand Thornton has provided a qualified opinion for the second year in a row, and this is due to the city offers employees a benefit of accumulating non-invested sick leave. So, as of December 31st, we did, we chose again not to accrue for this, as we didn't feel that it was a departure from the Canadian public sector accounting standards. This does not impact our financials in any way in that we wouldn't receive funding because it was a qualified opinion. So, the things to highlight with this year's audited statements and our comparison to our budgeted, our budget for 2020, so our revenue ended up being 2.2 million above budget. This is mostly due to the MEAP and the Safe Restart Program grants that we received. We've applied this revenue towards some of our capital projects, so that meant we didn't have to pull from reserves for these projects. Our expenses ended up being $2 million under budget, and this was mostly due to COVID in that we didn't have to hire some of our summer staff. We canceled some programming, and we just had a decrease in maintenance costs overall just because they weren't open, and the wear and tear was down on those. So, other areas to highlight would be cash and investments, so they increased by 8.7 million. 5.6 of this was due to funding that we received for the Spark Center, so we received a $15 million loan, and that included in that 8.7 million would be 5.6 of that loan that we received to complete the project. Taxes received actually decreased by 420,000, so that was great to see, even with COVID, that taxpayers were able to pay their property tax. So, as I mentioned, the long-term debt, we did obtain a $15 million loan for the Spark Center, and the repayment start commenced in 2021. Capital assets, those increased by just under 14 million, and that would be the Spark Center and the Fleet Storage Building that we have built. Reserves, they increased by 3 million, so this is partly due to some internal loan repayments, some carried forward projects that we had. We did have some savings on budgeted items, and it's also due to the credit union Spark Center loan was carried forward, and then we also applied some of these grants towards our, rather than taking from our reserves, we applied them to the projects. So, the hospital levy, that's detailed in Note 13, that's set up as a trust, that's administered by the city, and we've collected 5.9 million of the 6 million as of December 31st. So, the audited financials, they will be available on our website as soon as I get a final copy from the auditors. Right now, what we have has a draft over it, so I'll have to get a final copy from them, and also the public accounts, we can have them available on our website, likely in the next couple of days. Does anyone have questions?
First off, before we have questions, do you have a motion to receive, to approve?
Your worship, I'll make that motion, that the 2020 audited financial statements and the 2019 public accounts for the City of Waverham be accepted as presented.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Approved unanimously. Number E, the police HVAC system. Andrew?
Thank you. So, as approved through the city budgeting process, again, at the start of the year, there was $50,000 allocated towards the installation of a new electronic HVAC system control to replace the existing pneumatic controls over at the city police building. So, the replacement of the existing pneumatic controls is critical, as they're, they are, those systems are all considered obsolete, so if we have a breakdown when there are parts available, they're pretty hard to source and usually have long lead times, and now with the ongoing issues with shipping and whatnot, that gets a little bit even more concerning. So, anytime we'd have to shut down the system because of a malfunction, we may have to actually shut down the entire heating system for the police building, which is not good for a 24/7 facility. So, a request for proposal for the equipment supply and the contractor services was posted on the City of Waverham website and the SAS Tenders websites, which closed at 4:00 PM on August 13th. Again, only one submission was received, and the pricing is as stated below, so the proponent was Prairie Controls Incorporated. They submitted a bid price of $54,000 plus applicable taxes, and their expected completion date is dependent again on manufacturer supply. However, it must occur before the weather turns, and we have to engage the system to heat for the year. So, although only one proposal was received, we are confident again in the services provided by Prairie Controls. The proposed control system would be the same as currently used in five of our other facilities, including City Hall, Crescent Point Place, and Tom's Andy Sports Arena, the Waverham Leisure Center, Public Works Building, and the Fire Hall, and the new Fleet Storage Building as well. So, although the proposed price comes in slightly over the budget of 50,000, the Leisure Services Department believes this to be a high priority for the police building and must be completed in 2021. This is again a proactive approach to ensure that we don't have any lengthy heating interruptions that occur at the police building. So, based on the full bid assessment, the Leisure Services Department would like to recommend that Prairie Controls Limited of Regina, Saskatchewan, be awarded the supply and the installation of the city police building electronic HVAC system controls for a price of $54,000 plus applicable taxes.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd make a motion that the bid of Prairie Controls Limited of Regina, Saskatchewan, for the supply and installation of electronic heating system controls at Waverham Police Station in the amount of $54,000 plus applicable taxes, as recommended, be accepted.
I'll second that motion.
Call the question? No, I was going to say, asking for questions, and then mean call the question, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship, Andrew, I appreciate that you've, you've put that, that condition in there that it has to be done before the weather changes. What's the contingency plan, should that, should that come apart on us?
Contingency plan is that we continue forward with what we have, hoping that we don't experience any malfunctions along the way, and then we would get it in the queue, we would carry it over until 2022 and get it in the queue as soon as spring comes around.
Great, thanks.
Seeing no further questions, call the question, all those in favor? Curred unanimously. Introduction of bylaws. Bylaw 2021 3432, Official Community Plan Amendment. Janine?
Good evening, councilors. So, the city has received a zoning bylaw amendment application and corresponding official community plan amendment application from Kevin Malley, and they are requesting that the properties, they're in the process of purchasing, be given the land use designation of industrial in the official community plan, and the properties be rezoned from urban holding to medium industrial. These changes are requested to facilitate the development of the lands as two parcels for industrial and commercial uses. They are located at the corner of Gray Street, which is a currently undeveloped road, and Regina Avenue on the west side of the Tadaway Parkway and Suris River. They're legally described as lots 1 to 10 and 23 to 32, and that should say Block B, not Block 8, Plan AZ 357, and the undeveloped lane that council closed a few meetings ago by bylaw. So, public notice, if council proceeds with first readings of both these bylaws, then public notices will be sent out in accordance with the public notice policy for a public hearing to occur on September 27th at the regular council meeting. So, the development proposal, they're currently working through a plan of subdivision involving the consolidation of the lane and re-subdivision of the land to create two developable parcels which would front onto Gray Street, and I'll show you a diagram below. The applicants are requesting the industrial land use designation in the OCP, which is consistent with the surrounding properties to the west and south. The property currently doesn't have a land use designation in the OCP map and was intended for future determination. They're also requesting that the properties be rezoned from urban holding to medium industrial to facilitate development of the sites with industrial type uses, such as a contractor's shop and yard or similar uses. So, there's a diagram of the subject property that we're talking about outlined in red. So, there's the lane down the middle there, and it shows two parcels, but there are actually 10 very small parcels on either side, and some aerial imagery of what the lands look like. So, it's currently undeveloped out there, and Regina Avenue ends just to the west of the property. There's the plan of subdivision proposal, which is currently being reviewed by the applicable agencies through the plan of subdivision process, so it'll be two parcels fronting onto Gray Street. So, the OCP, the properties currently have no land use designation, and it was intended that the land use designation would be determined once the properties were to be developed. They're requesting that they be designated industrial on the land use designation map, which is consistent with the surrounding area. The purpose of this designation is to provide land for light, medium, and heavy industrial uses. Some of the applicable policies are listed, including that industrial uses must not be offensive relating to smoke, vibration, odor, noise, et cetera, to neighboring land uses, and that uses that are offensive shall be located with a buffer that has sufficient distance from non-industrial uses to minimize impacts. Unsightly industrial establishments will be located away from transportation routes, which are heavily used by travelers, and street design will meet industrial traffic needs into, from, and within the subdivision, and it will maintain an attractive physical environment. So, staff do not object to the designation of these lands as industrial. Property is currently on the periphery of an existing industrial area, and the land use designation would be consistent with the surrounding area. There are a few residential properties in the area that are existing, however, the intent is for these lands to transition to industrial once the existing residential uses are exhausted. The lands in this area are not currently serviced with sewer, however, there is water servicing available, which the applicant can connect to at their own cost. The applicant will be required to extend Regina Avenue and construct a portion of Gray Street to provide accesses to the subject properties in compliance with the zoning bylaw. So, I've included a map of the land use designation map, shown where the subject property is. All of the properties in purple already have an industrial land use designation, so it is consistent with the surrounding areas. Staff reviewed the proposal against the statements of provincial interest as required by the province. The property is not located within the floodway, and the floodproofing measures will be enforced through the zoning bylaw because it has been identified in the flood fringe. There's a setback of approximately 100 meters from the river, so there should be little impact on source water, and the development will contribute to the economic development of the city. So, the zoning bylaw, the applicant had request, had originally requested that the lands be rezoned to medium industrial, which is a zone designed for uses wide range of industrial uses that carry out some of their operations outdoors and may require a higher percentage of outdoor storage and activity, but not of an obnoxious or offensive nature, and I've included a list of what's included in the medium industrial zone. I've also included information on the light industrial zone, because that is what staff are recommending that the property is, be rezoned to instead. It's designed for a wide range of industrial and service uses, requiring smaller sites with a small amount of outdoor storage, but exploiting uses which may be offensive by reason of noise, smell, or other forms of pollution. So, currently, the properties are zoned urban holding, which is designed to protect lands that are required for future development and protect them against premature subdivision and development. It allows for minimal development in land uses since it's designed for land that is for future development and would eventually be rezoned to facilitate that when appropriate. So, given that the subject property is within an existing developed area, it is appropriate to develop the land and change the zoning to be more consistent with the surrounding area. Most of the areas zoned light or medium industrial already, and the applicants requested medium industrial. Staff want to note that the properties are closer to the parkway, and other ones that are close to the parkway are zoned light industrial, since it's designed for less intensive industrial uses with less outdoor storage, and staff would recommend that the light industrial zone would be more appropriate for the subject property, given the proximity to the parks and open space zone to the east. The applicant is looking to develop a contractor's shop and yard or similar use on the properties, and a contractor's shop and yard is permitted in the medium industrial zone and is discretion- and a contractor's shop and yard is permitted in the medium industrial zone and is discretionary in the light industrial zone. Staff would recommend that the subject property be rezoned to light industrial and that the light industrial zone be amended to allow for a contractor's shop and yard as a permitted use instead of a discretionary use. The medium industrial zone would allow for uses such as petroleum and propane bulk storage and sales, as well as a junk or salvage yard, and other more intensive industrial uses, which in staff's opinion are not appropriate in close proximity to the parkway and river. The proposed parcels would meet the regulations of the light industrial zone in terms of lot frontage and lot area, and they would be able to meet the regulations of the light industrial zone once they are developed. The properties are located within the flood fringe, so the regulations within the flood fringe overlay zone of the zoning bylaw will apply, which require floodproofing to a half meter above the 1 and 500 year flood elevation as per the statements of provincial interest. So I've included a map of the zoning bylaw and the existing zoning in the area. Again, the darker purple is medium industrial, and the lighter purple is light industrial. So the Weyburn District Planning Commission will see the bylaws if council gives them first reading tonight. There's a meeting upcoming on September 17th for input. The official community plan amendment must be approved by the Minister of Government Relations. So upon final reading of the bylaw, it'll be submitted to the province for ministerial approval, and both bylaws will take effect upon that approval. So council's recommendation, or staff's recommendations would be option one, which is that council gives first reading to bylaw 2021-3432, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan to designate the above-mentioned lands as industrial on the land use designation map, and that council gives first reading to bylaw 2021-3433, being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone the above-mentioned lands from urban holding to light industrial, and that council directs administration to advertise both bylaws as per the public notice policy. Option number two would be that council refuses to give first reading to both bylaws and direct administration to advise the applicant of the refusal. So staff would recommend that option number one be proceeded with by council.
So we will deal with this bylaw, official community plan amendment first, and then the bylaw, zoning bylaw amendment. Do I have a motion for the bylaw and the official community plan amendment?
Yes, Your Worship, the bylaw 2021-3432, to amend bylaw 2020-3411, official community plan for the purpose to designate the lands at the corner of Gray Street and Regina Avenue as industrial on the land use designation map in compliance with the City of Weyburn public notice policy be read a first time.
Do you have a second?
I can second that, Your Worship.
Questions? Discussion? Just, go ahead, quick.
Janine, your microphone was off. Can you do that again?
No.
I just wanted to say thanks for the depth of your report. It makes the decision-making a lot easier, and it is good to see the investment in the community, so thank you.
Mr. Van Betje?
I have a question, and this might apply more to the next bylaw, but so is there consideration given to the proximity to the river for some of the uses that might be in light industrial? Like, I'm thinking of the gas bar, and if there's other things as far as seepage or possible leak or contamination or something like that.
Yeah, we could look at that. I think there are other zones that would also allow for the same thing, so that would have to be reviewed through a discretionary use, or there are some regulations in the bylaw that are general regulations that apply to those kinds of uses.
Right. So we could look at maybe if there is something that maybe isn't so good to be in that zone that might be good, not be great for being close to the river.
Yep.
Call the question? All in favor? Just give them first reading, passed unanimously, first reading, and that will be then, but announce for, second reading for public notice?
Yes. So there'll be a public notice as per our public notice policy, and then I believe that it's going to go to district planning, as she stated in September, so I believe it will come back on September 27th to that meeting for second and possible final read.
Okay. Bylaw 2021-3433, zoning bylaw amendment. Do I have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Worship. A move that bylaw 2021-3433, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 2020-3412, for the purpose of rezoning Gray Street and Regina Avenue from urgent and holdings to light industrial in compliance with the City of Weyburn public notice policy, be read a first time tonight.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Questions?
I agree with Mel.
I agree with Councilor Van Betje. I think it's probably worth having district planning take a look at this and see if there's maybe another option to go with, but this is only first reading, so I certainly support this for now.
Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. New business rural water hookup request? Jen?
Yep. So we have received three hookups from the Weyburn Utility Board. So the Weyburn Utility Board has requested approval to hook up two new residential water services as well as one new commercial water service. The owners have confirmed satisfactory sewage disposal arrangements, so it is recommend the following requests be approved for residential water service. Virginia and Morgan Kellon, they'd be located at southeast 4 and 9, 14th West of the Second, Lot C, and then Eric Kesslering, southeast 26 of 8, 14, West of the Second, Parcel S. The $10,000 connection fee does apply to both these residential applications. In addition, we do recommend the following requests be approved for commercial water service. Zeke Cultivation Incorporated, northeast 10 of 8, 14, West of the Second, Parcel X. This would have a $25,000 connection fee that does apply to commercial applications.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Worship. A move that the request of the Weyburn Utility Board for access to the rural pipeline for the following applicants be approved, subject to fulfilling the City of Weyburn/Weyburn Utility Board residential hookup requirements for the following. Virginia and Morgan Kellon, southeast 4 of 9, 14, West of the Second, Lot C. Eric Kesslering, southeast 26 of 8, 14, West of the Second, Parcel S. And Zevick Cultivation Incorporated, northeast 10 of 8, 14, West of the Second, Parcel S.
Second?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Discussion?
Thanks, Your Worship. Jen, the commercial connection, has that been approved through the planning commission? I feel I may have missed that in the report.
I will answer that. That's not a requirement to be approved.
That's not a requirement? Okay.
No, the Warhuf are required to do.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Van Betje?
Yes, Jen, I was just wondering, the commercial use, do we know if it's a high water usage or do they tell us something like that, or if it's just?
We don't necessarily, we don't look at that. The fee is standardized, 25,000, whether it's a high or a low usage. That's just a standard fee for a commercial hookup. We don't evaluate that. The only time that we would possibly look at it is if we know there's potential for high usage, then we would look at a further in-depth use, whether we had permitted or not, but these are not expected to be a high water usage.
That's what I was wondering, is if we checked, if it was a high usage, then it would be?
Yeah, we would have further discussions, and we would do a bit more study for expecting a very large user to come in like that, but this user is not expected to be that high.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none? Call the question? All those in favor? Carried unanimously. That's it for new business, queries and announcements. Anything around the table?
Yes, Your Worship. Thank you. I just wanted to announce that the Walk of Fame Committee has set a date for their induction ceremony for 2021, and it will be on September 11th at 2:00 PM in front of City Hall, and there will be two inductees, Graham Delet and Catherine Groucho. So we'll see you all there at 2 o'clock, September 11th, in front of City Hall.
And the other announcements are, I'm going to mayor's meeting, I am going to mayor's meeting here on Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, in Yorkton. That's going to be the first one in-person mayor's meeting, and then I'll be attending also a virtual mayor's conference the next following week through SUMA. On that, so a lot of our summer meetings where the mayors are meeting and getting together are working, this will be. And this virtual one is a workshop training again for the mayors as to how to make sure to move forward with the cities and towns and villages and such. Other than that, that's just about all that there is, say. So is there anything else? There's no notice of motions? You don't have anything you want to go forward with next meeting? Okay. And then we, then just move for adjournment. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll see you on, what's the next meeting date?
September 13th.
September 13th, 5:00 PM. Thank you.